Public speaking voice. I can, that's not a problem. Good evening, I would like to call this meeting to order. This is our work session for December 6th. What is your introduction or anything? Alright, so, Steve, would you like to introduce the board?
Sure, so we've got lots and lots of stuff that's loaded out on Board Docs. I'm happy to pull up anything that we need to see for, especially for people who are in the audience, so they know what we're looking at. But just a real quick walkthrough, so we have a process now for a dual round of processing for applying for voluntary transfers. What you have in front of you is this is the information related to the secondary application for voluntary transfers. So this closed on December 1st. Maybe I'll stand up here for just a minute and share with you that the second document that's loaded up here is the tracking summary that we put together based on the applications that were received. None of these have been processed, so this raw data is simply for the applications themselves. And so the screen that's up there, I'll just walk through this with you so you know what you're looking at. So from North Central, we had 32 7th graders who asked to voluntarily transfer to Northwest, two who asked to go to Southeast. For 8th grade, there were three that asked to go to Northwest and four that asked to go to Southeast, so that's reading across. If you were to read down and look at North Central, reading down, you would see that there are 12 kids from Northwest who asked to go to North Central, seven kids who are 8th graders that asked to go to North Central, one 7th grader from Southeast, and one 8th grader from Southeast. So then, looking outside the grid, you can see on the right, the total number of students that asked to move out of North Central to one of the other two, that's 41. 30 students that asked to move out of Northwest, two students that asked to move out of Southeast. If you look at the bottom in red there, you can see the students and where they asked to move to. So 21 students asked to move to North Central, 35 asked to move to Northwest, and 17 asked to move to Southeast. So then in the far bottom, you see the net. So when you look at the students that have asked to leave and the students that have asked to come, North Central is down 20 students, Northwest is up 5 students, Southeast would be down 15 students. Again, these are only applications, I'm sorry, up 15. So these are only the applications, so they have not been processed yet. Another issue which you don't see here, you actually see some overlap with it, it was one of the questions that Chris asked earlier today that we sent an email out on. Students who are eligible for capstoneing, that is incoming 8th graders, actually received a letter which asked them to check off and send back that they were planning on staying. We are not sure, not having gone through it yet, but we presume that the handful of 8th graders that you see on here, there are 17 of them, that there may actually be some students in here who are actual capstone students who inadvertently filled out the voluntary transfer form. One of the reasons that we have that supposition is that we ask, we have several parents that essentially said, "I want to make sure I've covered my bases, I'm going to fill out both forms." So we are still processing the capstone letters. One of the things that Matt and I have talked about is ensuring that there aren't any students who didn't respond to that. Actually, I talked to Greg Schultz about that today at our Administrative Council meeting, that although everyone got a letter, and we haven't processed them all yet, we don't think we have 100% response rate. And so, we're looking at following up individually with students that didn't reply to the capstone letter, so that we have accurate data for all of our incoming 8th graders and for our incoming 11th and 12th graders at the high school level. So what you have in front of you is the raw data on applications that have been received to date, and then maybe looking at the high school data on the next page, one of the issues that...
Can we go from that one, Steve, for a second?
Yeah, sure.
And I apologize if, but when we're looking at Northwest Junior High...
Sure, right here.
...in 7th grade, we've got 32. Do we know, or you know, where are those kids coming from as far as elementary?
We haven't gone through and analyzed it yet, so we haven't gone through each individual one. We presume that most of those are students from Kirkwood that are electing to go to Northwest that were assigned to North Central. There are 47 6th graders at Kirkwood right now, so this would represent the majority of those, if indeed it is the Kirkwood kids.
Is that something you're going to provide for us?
Yes, and we did talk to Anita today, and her presumption would align with this, that essentially the way she described it is, and we have to look at the data to see that, based on her interaction with families, those that live close to Kirkwood are looking at that as their preferred choice. Some of the families that live further away from Kirkwood, the transportation to North Central's been attractive to them. In particular, she said some of the Boston Way families are looking at it and looking at the option that the district is providing for transportation in North Central. And based on her anecdotal conversations with parents there, we may find that some of the students that live on Boston Way have elected to go to North Central, so they get At the high school level, it's essentially the same thing. The only difference is, I draw your attention over here to the right-hand side, where you see 55 of the 62 students that have asked to leave Liberty High School are students that are 9th and 10th graders. That's part of that population that does not have the discretion to leave Liberty High School unless there is a hardship. So when we go through and process those applications, we presume that all 55 of those kids will be applying for a hardship. Whether they actually qualify for one, we don't know because we haven't looked to see what their rationale is for that. But obviously, that's a pretty big chunk of the total, when you think about 137 total transfers, and 55 of them come from the 9th and 10th grade class at Liberty High School. Other than that, when you look at the chart as a whole, there aren't significantly large cells in there, with the exception of a couple there when you look at from West to Liberty. We have 23 and 15 at 9th and 10th grade. So we may have some families that are looking at the opportunity to move their kids there early in their career and then push them all the way through. But again, I'm not sure where those kids live at this time, we haven't gone through all those yet.
So the kids that are asking to transfer from Liberty to West, 9th and 10th graders?
Right.
And I guess the same thing from Liberty to City High, in the same grade. Those could be anybody that applied for it. It's not, you know what I'm saying, they don't necessarily go off the hardship yet.
Correct. Well, if they're from Liberty, so that means they live in the Liberty attendance zone and they're 9th and 10th graders, and they've applied to go to West or City, they would have had to, they filled out a voluntary transfer, but they would have had to included a hardship rationale for that request.
So all of those people put a hardship.
They've all, we presume they've all requested one, we haven't gone through them yet, but we presume that they're, we're going to find...
Yeah, we have looked at the specific applications to see if they did put one, but that would be the basis they would call it.
Right.
Those are the only ones who really said couldn't do it.
Right.
And what would be, without giving everybody a count, fill it out.
Sure.
What are, what would be considered...
You bet.
...a successful hardship?
So things that we discussed around the table here were, there's two that spring immediately to mind. So if you were a Hills student or a Lincoln student, and you were part of those groups that had talked about having been moved around significantly, that's something that we would take a look at. Now keep in mind, you may live in the Hills attendance area, but were you actually one of the families that moved around? So we would want to look at that. But those would be two categories, right off the top of my head, that I would say that we've had conversation about with you at the board table, that we know was an area of heightened concern that you had. So definitely, we'll be looking at those two.
What if you've got an older sibling that's asked to chose to stay?
Yep, that's another thing that you'd expressed a concern about, so that's on our list to look at as we go through that.
With the hardships, presumably a hardship could arise at any time. So there's no real December 1st deadline on hardship applications? Although, are you suggesting, at least for these power change ones, you would have to make a...
Well, there was a voluntary transfer deadline of December 1st, and then there's a voluntary transfer deadline for elementary of March 1st. We can grant those after the fact, but one of the things that we don't then take account, into account, is the registration and staffing process at either the secondary or the elementary level. And so what happens is, if you come in after the fact, then we're looking at space available at the elementary. That would be by grade level, by class. At the secondary level, we're looking at it school as a whole, and we're looking at it in relation to staffing that's already been completed. So let's say somebody has a hardship and they come to us in April and say, "Hey, this is developed." We're going to look at it then and say, "Does that school, you want to move from North Central to Southeast?" We're going to take a look at it and say, "Is there room at the school? Is there staffing to support moving you to Southeast at that point in time?" Because we'll have already built the master schedule and staffed the building, and there may not be room.
But you wouldn't take that approach to somebody with a safety or a security hardship?
No, no.
So you're saying the ones that are boundary changed...
Right, yeah, sorry, I was looking at it in the context of the earlier conversation, right.
So the difference between the way you treat it...
So in a bullying situation...
Right, that we always...
Instead of those at any time, matter those levels?
Yep, those are year-round. Those types of safety and security type issues, safety and security.
But you wouldn't entertain a district change hardship even after December 1st if there was space available?
We look at them on an individual basis, we don't get a lot of them. Most of them that come in after the fact are like the ones you described, we've got an incident of bullying and harassment, or we've got some other concern like that that's arisen. A lot of custodial parent issues come up that way. So those are the kinds of things that we deal with usually after the fact.
So sorry, I was just going to say, just backing up to the Southeast Junior High thing with a net of 15 in, how does, on the transfers, what's the likelihood? I know that some of them will be hardship, right? Some of them will be hardship...
We may, yep.
...for multiple moves. But still, when it comes to capacity...
Sure, that's a great question.
And how many kids can we cram into that?
So remember, when you're looking at the facility master plan, there's a couple things to think about with capacity. First of all, the 10plex is slated to move from Lucas to Southeast. Don't think of it, though, necessarily as getting 10 extra classrooms. If you've been in Southeast, you know that one of their really significant changes is common space. So we've been working with Michelle on what opportunities there may be to use space near the cafeteria to provide some relief for some of that common space. So we've talked about hopefully recovering six classrooms out of the 10plex with perhaps four classrooms inside. So if we move, we'd have 10 academic classrooms in the 10plex, but then we might displace up to four current classrooms that are near the common area to use for other common purposes for Southeast, so that there's a little bit of flexible space there. And that's always been the intent of moving the 10plex, to provide some of that relief for them. At City High, we know that in Phase 2, they're slated for another sixth classroom addition. So we've looked at that six-plex that's at Lucas with the intent to move that onto the City High campus to create some additional classroom space until we get the additional classes built at City High. So haven't finalized that yet, but that's the intent right now.
I just know that there's, you know, always a lot of discussion about, you know, our capacity numbers, and it's, well, you know, when you look at the net for North Central Junior High, down 20, you know, I, North Central being, I mean, the only one where junior highs isn't really a hotspot is Northwest.
Right, I was going to say, Northwest.
So the only one that's not a hotspot is Northwest, but Southeast, you're looking at a net of 15, it's just...
Okay, but that's not a net of 15 from this year's number, right? I mean, we've moved a whole bunch of Alexander and Hills, or at least Alexander, out.
Right.
We're talking about 15 back.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Right, but I'm just looking at what our 95% rule is with regard to capacity. So I get what you're saying, where, you know, we're taking some away and then we're putting, we're potentially putting 15 more in, but again, I'm just looking at where those numbers are going to be.
Plus, those numbers really are not accurate. If we don't have the capstone kids...
Right, we got to...
I mean, there's, I think you said at one point there were 63 7th graders from Wycombe that are at North Central this year.
I believe that's the number, yes.
So that's an awful lot of kids that may want to capstone, that probably didn't do the form.
Yeah, so...
So I'm just saying, I don't know that North Central is really going to be down 20 students. Let's all set it down.
Correct. So we got a couple things there. First of all, we've got the capstone kids, so which 7th graders are staying at their home school for 8th grade? We've got the voluntary transfer kids, so let's net them out, say we've gone through and determined who qualifies for a hardship and who doesn't, and so we've got a net number there. And then we've got the roll-up. So remember, when we look at our cohorts, we look like this. So for almost every grade in the district, the preceding grade is a little bit bigger. So as you roll those kids up and they move to the next grade level, there may be 100 5th graders this year, there's 105 5th graders next year when the 4th graders become the 5th grade class. So those are three things that we have to do as part of this process, is to roll up our current students, look at the capstone students, look at the voluntary transfer students, and then net out, which I think is the question you were getting to, netting out the number. What's the bottom number at the, after that?
Right, or not even so much the little change box, let's just say how many students are projected to be there. And then we can say how many students are projected to be there if we take some certain approach to granting transfers.
Right.
My point was not to, not to say that North Central isn't a problem. My point was to continue to emphasize the issue over at Southeast is, you know, again, that's tight there.
Yeah, and I hear you, I just think when we look at these net numbers right now, we might as well just cross them out.
They're kind of a rounding error, if you will, and then...
Well, they don't include the potential capstones, so for all three junior highs, we really don't know what those numbers are.
Yeah, the net on the...
The takeaway here is that Northwest is the only one that crowding is in a problem right now, right?
And maybe one of the, maybe one of the...
Today if not, so...
Yeah, maybe one of the takeaways from these numbers is that with the number of kids that have asked to move in and out, there isn't a large, there's not a dramatic change at any one school, which...
Right.
From that standpoint, one of the things that we had talked about internally was a concern in that, and we wanted that December 1st deadline because we were worried that when we got this chart done, there might be a dramatic swing. 100 kids want to go here or there.
Right.
And those net numbers may have been drastically different. That would have really been a concern for us, and because we know that parents want to know that, we know that our secondary administrators need that information to work with students for registration, we wanted to get that information as quick as possible.
Are these numbers likely to move the needle on some of our aspirational goals with regard to 3J?
In terms of, are they...
With regards to our identified opportunity gaps?
We don't know. The students are not, we don't have them plugged into the system in such a manner that we've got them measured by demographic.
And once it's small, you wouldn't want it anyway, because then they would potentially identify it. Okay. I just think it's worth noting that people who can move sometimes do.
I guess the one thing I wanted to bring up was, and I don't know if you can answer it, but we had, we've had several people come up to the podium and speak about their individual cases. Does it appear that the people that come and spoke here directly on their things, are they going to be...
I don't know that, we haven't looked at names yet. We've only looked at numbers. We wanted to, even though December 1st was Thursday, we wanted to make sure that if somebody had sent it in, it was postmarked type of thing, so we were hanging on to that to make sure that we had everything, we didn't get a late minute, last minute flurry with them. So we filled the chart in on Thursday, updated it on Friday, and then updated again yesterday, just to make sure that we had all the numbers in there, so that everybody had the chance to get theirs in by that Friday, that December 1st deadline.
So for the most part, people who want to move, we have space for them to move?
We think we do.
That's what you mean. Will we have space for them two years later when they're juniors and seniors?
Well, are we making the rule that when you're in, you're in?
Yes, at the secondary level, and that was something that you'd brought up, was making sure that we didn't have, kids have to go through that on the annual basis, and so...
So anybody...
So you come in as a, so with these kids, if you come in as a 7th grader, if you're the, the, the four kids at North Central, or two kids at North Central in 7th grade that want to move to Southeast, we're saying that you can be there this year, or next year and the following year, so...
And then for this year's 9th graders too?
And then for this year's 9th graders, if they were to come into West High, we would tell them that they could finish there as seniors.
But I mean, are this year's 9th graders at City allowed to stay there even if they've been redistricted into Liberty or...
If it's, if you're a 9th grader at City and you've been redistricted to West, you could apply to voluntarily transfer back to City. If you're a 9th grader at City and you've been redistricted to Liberty, you could apply to go back to City on a hardship, but we'd be reviewing that, and if you got in, you'd be able to stay. If you didn't get in, you could apply again next year as a voluntary transfer student. No, they're not. 9th graders are not capstoned.
But are future 9th graders will be capstoned?
No. No, you won't be, you won't be capstoned in that way, but if you get a voluntary transfer, you would, that voluntary transfer would cover your high school career.
So if you get a voluntary transfer out into 9th grade and school is not your assigned school...
Then you would be the...
...there through graduation, but not, it doesn't work then for this year's 9th graders?
It would, if it was granted to you as a 9th grader this year, it would. I'm just saying that if you were a 9th grader...
Change because of...
If you were, yeah, if you were a 9th grader and you were going to Liberty, if you'd use the example of you were a 9th grader and going to West, I'd say, "Yeah, then you'd be under voluntary transfer, if you got it, you'd stay." If you were going to Liberty, then you'd have to qualify for a hardship to come back to City.
Even as to West, though, that's a difference than saying...
Yeah, because West right now is just open to voluntary...
You get to stay, period. Whereas next year, you're saying, "That would be the rule, if you're a 9th grader, you get to stay, period."
No, it'd work the same for both years. So if you're a, if you're an incoming 9th grader at City High, and you're applying to go to West High, and we grant that, we're granting it through your senior year. And it would be the same thing if you were an incoming 9th grader in subsequent years. And that was the, that was...
Can I try to say it differently?
Yeah.
I think the length of the granting of the transfer means the same thing, you'd stay for the length of your high school experience, it's just on the grounds of which the transfer would be granted.
Sure.
Getting a transfer granted out of West High to City High is different than getting a transfer granted out of Liberty High to City High.
Okay, but if you were a West High resident who transferred into City High as a 9th grader this year, you'd be there forever if you wanted to.
Right. And the same thing if you got out of Liberty High...
But if you are an Alexander resident at 9th grade, you're a City at 9th grade this year, it's different for you. You've got to ask to stay at City through the transfer process.
No, you'd still be applying for a transfer because you're an Alexander student that's going to be now zoned to West, so you're technically a West student, so you'd be applying for a transfer.
And you've got to apply for the transfer in a way that someone who has already been given a transfer to City has an offer doesn't have to do.
I'm not following, so...
I think you're using the word "transfer" too liberally, so if you're redistricted to City High, you're granted that for the, for your four years, obviously, but if you...
Or, I mean, if you're a West High area resident and a 9th grader at City High this year because you transferred in, you're not to apply for voluntary transfer, right?
You couldn't have transferred into City High this year.
It's closed, yeah. Ah, alright, sorry. I was thinking you were all, you were looking future-oriented the whole time, not this current school year. Sorry about that.
That's what I was forgetting, it was closed.
Sorry about that.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the only motion we approved was to open voluntary transfer. And we didn't approve any other rules at all?
I, you approved the opening voluntary transfer with the exception of the 9th and 10th graders at Liberty who were required to attend Liberty.
So these rules about being granted 9th grade and onward, I guess I thought we hadn't approved that yet.
No, that was actually, and Phil brought that up, was the not requiring them to go through the annual application, so that was part of that process, was that the, at the secondary, at the elementary level, still an annual, but at the secondary level, it was once during the career. So you could come in as a 9th grader, 10th grader, 11th grader, but you would only apply once to come in at the high school level. Junior High's kind of de facto, because if you apply to come in as a 7th grader, the capstone rule just automatically applies, so it's really, it would only ever be one application, unless, I guess unless you came in as an 8th grader, but still, it's only one application.
I like that rule, but I don't think you voted on it.
I thought it was an administrative rule.
Yeah, I don't remember voting on it personally.
Only voted at the very beginning about, should we open transfers?
And then Chris said, "We can break this into two motions." And then we opened up transfers, and then he said, "We don't need another motion, let's just leave it open."
You definitely, I'll go back and look at that. I know there's a lot of conversation, sure.
I just watched it, just to make sure I got it.
Yeah.
And that's what, that's what was stated. Because I, there was a memo that Matt had given us, but we did not approve it.
So that may just be an administrative guideline, then, that came out of the conversation at the table?
Yeah, I thought, I thought the purpose of tonight's meeting, if it carries over into next week, was to decide if the board wanted to be hands-off in terms of what the rules of transfers were going to be, or if you wanted to have some say or tweak it in some way. In which case, I feel, I mean, the two things I'd like to be able to assess is the effect it's going to have on the FRL disparities, and the effect it's going to have on the overcrowding, if there is any. And so without more numbers like the capstone numbers, what we expect as far as, you know, for all we know, all of the, all of the, what is it, 36 people who want to transfer out of Liberty, those might all be denied.
They could be.
So unless we get some sense of sort of, how would it look under the current administrative thinking about whether to grant or not, it's very hard for us to assess those two things.
And I would say in addition to that, I guess I, I still feel like I don't have a good sense of what the current 8th graders, wait, make sure I have this right, no, the current 7th graders at North Central Junior High plan to do for high school, that are not assigned to North Central Junior High next year, but get to go there because of capstoneing.
We haven't gathered any information from them.
So I would say we need to send them a letter of intent, because if they're, to me, not that we can deny, they still get their capstone year, but if all 63 of those kids want to go on to Liberty then, then that's a whole different number that we've got. We're not going to see it in the first year, we're going to see it the second year.
Right, and that would be part of the process next year, then. They would apply next year, and we would look at them independent of these numbers.
So we would potentially make a set of rules for this year and make a new set of rules for next year?
No, I, we would look at, so next year, so this year's 7th graders who stay at North Central, so they capstone and they stay there. Then if they're assigned to West, then next year they would apply to Liberty. And so then we would look at capacity at Liberty during their tenure while they were there, and if we thought there were enough seats, then we would grant them that voluntary transfer. If we looked at it and there weren't enough seats there, then we would go to a lottery. Or if there were not enough seats to accept any of them, then we would come back and ask that you close Liberty until such time as we have more capacity there. And we do that on an annual basis. So each year we'll come back, each year we'll look at the, the, crop's not the right word, we'll look at the cohort that is requesting that voluntary transfer from the two high schools to the one, so we'll look at the, however many from each of the other two asked to go to that one. We'll cast forward and look at capacity over that timeframe, we'll decide whether or not there's space to accept them into the school. And if there, like I said, if there is, we take them all. If there isn't, then we either lottery or close. And we'll do that annually. And that's, that's kind of what we do at the elementary level right now. We haven't had to do it at the secondary level for the most part, because Northwest has always had extra seats, so if you want to go, you can just go. North Central did, essentially until next year, have open seats. Southeast has been closed, City's been closed, and West has been closed, we just happen to have to do it there. So that's, we've used that process, it just hasn't risen to a level of significance with you, because the number's been pretty small.
So then comes the question of, which we did not approve, whether we're talking current capacity or future capacity. We did not deal with that decision.
Yeah, we...
The recommendation, I think, from Matt was that we deal with, or that we look at in terms of future capacity, but that was not a vote.
Yeah, that, we've looked at it from the standpoint of, in each of those years, how many seats will we have? Yeah, that, we, we've looked at it from the standpoint of, in each of those years, how many seats will we have?
Yeah, but the number of seats isn't changing, for example, at Liberty for the next five years.
Right.
And anything that's bond-dependent?
I mean, yeah, that's the initial question for me. Are we going to, are we letting ninth graders into Liberty next year? Because there's room for them, even if we know that it means more than 1,000, probably more than 1,100 students will be there two years from now. I would say no. Um, but I don't think everybody's in agreement about it. And I guess the other question I have is, uh, to get, I wish we could get a clearer sense of who's going to qualify for hardship. Because, uh, you know, it's all against the background of, we've decided to send Kirkwood and Alexander to more distant schools, regardless of whether they want to go there or not. And they probably are the ones least able to provide their own transportation to take advantage of any transfer that are become available to them. Uh, we did it because, uh, A, we were hearing overcrowding arguments, and B, we were hearing FRL disparity arguments. And if we end up basically doing that, while at the same time accommodating requests from people who do have the means to provide their own transportation, regardless of what it does to FRL disparities, and regardless of what it does to overcrowding, uh, I, I, that seems hard to defend. A lot of that is solved if you just go by the current capacity.
Well, I guess you're going off of current capacity now, right? And for that, next year, when we improve transfers for the following year, we'll have known if the bond passed or not.
Mm-hmm.
So, you would still go off of that number. The future capacity would be the same as current capacity if it doesn't pass.
Right.
So, we'll know about nine months.
That's not the recommendation.
We've got a bunch of chances to pass that by.
Right. So, for that first year, for that year that he's, we're looking at transfers, then it may not pass, right? You're not going to be able to get it passed that first year, so then I-
Well, it hasn't passed yet. We're considering the future capacity to be 1,500. Won't we still be doing that next year?
But you're looking at seats, right?
We're looking at seats, yeah. And I can't remember when I sent it out, but, uh, there's that chart that moves forward that shows those capacity numbers, and each year that they changed. So, I know we went through and edited a couple of them, because we found a couple of them that were a year off, and we've got those in there. So, it shows those, those numbers going out, I want to say, 10 years, where it shows capacities at, uh, at all the schools.
I mean, those are still the future capacities until we change the plan, even if the bond fails.
Right. And then if the, if the board changes the plan, we'll adjust those, those seats accordingly, and then that'll, that'll generate the high and the low bound for us.
I don't see why we'd use 1,500 as the limit of what we would tolerate at Liberty. You know, three years from now, when there's no plan, there would be 1,500 seats there in three years from now. That's what I'm not getting.
I, I guess I'm not following you.
Well, it sounds like you're going to let people into Liberty next year, as long as they won't put that building eventually over the capacity of 1,500. Those students are going to come and go before there's 500 more seats in there.
In the year that they're in, in the school, wait, remember, the, the chart shows the capacity in each year. So, we can look at it and say, if you're coming in here as a freshman, and we're adding you to the cohort of students that are moving through, we can now say, this is the population of kids. Does that fit between the high and the low bound? So, in the next year, then, if we add another group of kids, we'll say, does that fit between the high and the low bounds? Those high and low bounds will change when the capacity of the building changes, but not before that.
Well, I'm confused then. So, next year, for, for this set of transfers, if you've got a kid from Wickham who's at ninth grade-
Mm-hmm.
And wants to go to Liberty, to me, automatically, we know that person's going to put that building further over capacity in 2019.
Yeah, so that, like I said-
If you use current capacity-
We can look at the carrying capacity on it.
I got the impression you, you're going to use 1,500 and not, not hold them back unless they're going to put over 1,500 at some point.
Uh, I think what we were going to do is, we were going to look at it and see, where did we come in at? Are we at 1,502, or are we at 1,600?
I'm watching.
So, if, if we had 1,498 kids and four applied for transfers, then the question is, would we allow all four of those in, or would we lottery off two of those slots? Knowing that we have kids-
You're talking about building it or net worth it for the next four years?
All right, 998. 998 and 1,002, and four apply. So, do you grant all four, or do you do a lottery for only two seats? How absolute do you hold those? I think that's, that's where we're at in terms of looking at them.
Although our age progression's alone, I thought you regret that those, that those won't go that 100 by 2019.
Yeah, actually, I think you'll see the, the new, we just got a draft of the, uh, the new enrollment report and, uh-
What do we see?
What's that?
Wait, do we need to wish it?
Uh, well, we're, we're going through and cleaning it up right now. As soon as we get it cleaned up with them, we'll get that, uh, we'll be pushing that out. Um, and, uh, that, Adam's working on it right now. And, uh, because of things like, oh, that automotive plant closure and, and some of the layoffs we've seen, I think the economic outlook, uh, is probably not perhaps as rosy as it was when they did it two years ago, and so the numbers are a little bit less. But, again, you know, we're going to, what we, those will be part of that factoring in of what we project the, the population to be, and, and we'll work within those bounds. You could. We'd like to get that cleaned up before we put it out in the general public.
We'll be seeing it by the end of the week anyway.
You will, you will.
Be here by the weekend.
It will be.
Uh, I'm not, I'm, I guess I'm based on just remembering the text of the recommendation earlier. What you're describing to me sounds different, so I'm not fully understanding what the approach is going to be, letting people in. And again, are we going to, are we going to be letting ninth and 10th graders go into Liberty next year? Because it seems to me that you know it's not put that building, even without the building's going to be-
Will age progress it up? I don't know that, Chris. I've got to run those numbers. I haven't run those numbers.
Well, to me, it's not a question of running the numbers. The question with the policy is, do we let people in if it's going to-
No, no, but I haven't run the numbers, so I don't know where the numbers fit within the bounds.
I understand, but, uh, if the numbers show that, you know, with no transfers at all, Liberty's going to be 1,100-
Then we'd come back and ask you to close it.
Are we going to say no to all the ninth and-
Then we'd come back and ask you to close it.
I think that makes sense. But it's different from what I remember. What were we talking about, future capacity? That threw me off.
Well, we've always looked at future capacity and said, how many, how many will be in there?
It seemed like we were talking-
Well, I think Liberty became a focal point of discussion, though, Chris. And there was, you know, you're trying to also figure other attendance centers that either have additions or are currently operating over their capacity. So, I think we really centered on that, and maybe we need to look at that a little bit differently based on Liberty, knowing it's got a large addition to it where other secondary attendance centers are going to be fairly stable on what their capacity is or what it can hold. Sands, you know, a, a six-plex here, a 10-plex there to accommodate some more classrooms. But I think Liberty, when we had that conversation that night, really stood out, because they know that, that capacity changes drastically. Where if we're looking at future capacity on those other ones, it, it was a little bit more negligible on how much that was going to grow. So, you know, if there's a different, maybe, level of comfort for the board with what we do at Liberty in comparison to those future capacity numbers for the other attendance centers. Because that seems where, it seems like your conversation keeps going to the concern about Liberty, Liberty being overcapacity.
Well, same thing with West or City if they're over there.
Well, you know, to Matt's point, so if, if City High is overcapacity, and you have kids that have asked to move to Liberty, and it is less overcapacity than City High is, then pragmatically-
Interesting.
Would it not be better to approve those transfers so that City High was not as crowded and City and Liberty were as overcrowded?
Interesting, although we got a lot of open seats over West.
But if that's not where they're applying, then the, the other alternative would be to rezone and move, and forcibly move them in order to take advantage of those seats. But absent that, then, from an administrative standpoint, do you try to balance the overcrowding?
Well, I understand the question, although that seems like a separate, separate point we have to address.
And again, remember-
A lot of times we're talking about people from West wanting to go to Liberty, but that seems like a different story.
I think the challenge is trying to write policy that then allows us to do our jobs. Or, or asking the board to make the decisions. That, that's the other alternative, is not to write a policy and have the board make those decisions.
Well, or you could write a policy that the board vote on.
I, I guess when I look at how far overcapacity both City and West have been operating for years, and I look at, you know, with bond passage, the future capacity at Liberty of being 1,500, I guess for me, um, anything is better than what we have right now. Right? We have hundreds of students overcapacity at both of our existing high schools. And I'm, with a, end, with a short term, even if it's a year, with bond passage, we've got 1,500 seats at Liberty. So, when I step back and look at it that way, I, I think, you know, we've had 400 kids overcapacity at West High. It's a whole class of kids, right? Almost an entire class of kids, too many in that building for years. It's not acceptable. But when there's, you know, there's an end in sight for that. And at Liberty, if it, if it tips o, over the 95% threshold or whatever in 2021 with a 500-student addition coming the next year, to me, it's not worth continuing to go around and around right now trying to write a policy if it's a short-term thing.
Well, I agree. I mean, I, I guess I feel like, sort of see it the other way. I said, if we finally built this building, we finally accommodate everybody and not have anybody in an overcrowded high school, why are we going to let people transfer out of West into Liberty if it's going to put it over capacity?
Well, and that's my argument, right, why you would use the future capacity numbers. That's because we're planning for five years, four years survivors. Otherwise, you're just going to go round and round every- I get, I get what you're, I get what you're saying, Chris. I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we obviously can't vote on anything. That's not an option.
True.
Um, so, we get an update?
We, we hope to have more information for you next Tuesday. Uh, we're, we're still working on this literally day by day.
Okay.
Is this on the meeting for Tuesday or the work session?
I think it's on the meeting.
It's on the meeting. They need a decision.
Yeah, we see, not a decision.
Yeah, that's a decision. Can you give us the elementary schools of where kids are applying?
We didn't have that in the database, uh, the way she was collecting it, because they came from the junior highs, so we didn't have their elementary school linked to it. Uh, we've asked her to go back and try to do that. Um, it literally is a lookup every single student, because that information isn't contained on the form. So, she's got to go back and look those up.
I, I think we have to be real careful. Um, and I'm just going to use an example. I'm not taking a position here, I'm just using an example. If 60 kids from Wickham, which is 2% FRL, leave West and go up to Liberty, which is already at, what, 20% or lower FRL, Liberty goes down, West goes up. So, we either have a goal or we don't have a goal. And if we're not going to be consistent with that, then I think we need to be clear about that.
Yeah, I don't think the policy says, though, that you can transfer if you're this or not if you're that, so that's something-
That's why I'm not taking a position. I'm just pointing it out that it would be helpful to know, because it's a different scenario if it's, I, I mean, if, we either have aspirational goals that we're going to follow-
Mm-hmm.
Or we don't. And I, I feel like we need to be consistent in our decision-making.
Yeah, I think the challenge with that is, again, uh, to write an aspirational goal and then operationalize it uh, in a transfer process that doesn't have board policy rules that say, you can go here if, or there if. I think that's the, the challenge with it.
Well, Chris, that it would solve itself if we just use current capacity, because then everybody has a seat. Everybody goes where their seat is open today, not bond-dependent, not five years from now, today. And then we don't have this question of whether they're going from West to Liberty or not, because it's not as you have hoped.
The one thing you'd have to do, though, is you'd have to look at that. You, you couldn't say necessarily today, because there aren't, uh, going to be a lot of juniors and seniors at-
Correct, yes.
Liberty next year, so-
They would be starting at 2018.
Right, so if you said today, there'd be plenty of space there next year.
Yeah.
So, you'd really have to look at and say, if you were requesting to come in as a ninth grader, then how many students do we predict that Liberty will have when you're a 10th grader? When you're a 11th grader? When you're a 12th grader? And if there are seats available throughout that timeframe, okay, fine, then you can go. And if there aren't seats available, then no, you can't.
Which is what you're doing, right?
That's the goal, yeah. And I think the only question that came up was, in that fifth year, is when the addition is proposed for Liberty High, and then that moves it from 1,000 to 1,500. So-
Well, at that point, in the fifth year, we'll know if the bond passes or not.
Right, but if you were a sophomore at West and you were asking, I don't know, that wouldn't be right either. If you were a, yeah, so, if you're requesting to go in this year, you're going to fall under the current, uh, guidelines that are there. And then to that other question you asked, so if you're an eighth, if you're a seventh grader this year, you're going to be an eighth grader. You're going to apply next year, then we cast forward from next year. Those kids would be seniors, it'd be 1,500, but you'd have to look at it and say, how many is juniors, how many is sophomores?
So, what you just described to me seems to me like you're talking about current capacity.
For each of the years.
For the current group of students that you've given us here.
For each of the years as they age up.
It ties about Liberty being 1,000 for next year's decisions. You're not talking about being 1,500?
No, not for next year's decisions.
I think that's where the confusion lies, because I thought in Matt's memo, he was saying, for all decisions from today forward, consider it 1,500. And, and you're saying, no, not until the kid that's in ninth grade at the point at which we're guaranteed they're going to have a seat at 1,500. We know the bond passed, we know, um, those seats are coming.
But Director Rowland, I think the, the root of your issue is you feel like the capacity conversation doesn't match your aspirational conversation on how you drew the boundaries. I think that's the root of the issue. And so, I think we're getting caught up in talking about future capacity and current capacity when we really feel like we have two policies conflicting, and that's probably the part that has to be talked about and reconciled, because I don't think the argument about current or future is probably the one we should be spending the time on. It's about how do those two reconcile themselves. I mean, that would be-
No, I'm totally agreeing with that. If there are no FRL issues, I would still say, I'm reluctant to let ninth graders enter. Whether that's their, you know, seats that are longer there, uh, it's part of, uh, part of the issue. And to me, what I would do is I'd be a little stingy with them now. We know population growth is coming, and you can review this every year, and decide, well, we're at the point now where we can let it go a little bit over, because we know 500 seats are coming. But it seems a little early to say that now.
How many are we trying to let in next year's school? I mean, what, like, total?
Oh, he just went to sleep. Maybe we're going to find it here. Hang on. Uh, there are, um, 45 students who have asked to transfer into Liberty.
And we don't know yet what the final number of the kids are going to be. We know we can have, we know we can hold about-
Right. We have 20, uh, 23 freshmen, incoming freshmen, and 16 incoming sophomores, four incoming juniors, and two incoming seniors who've asked to, uh, transfer into Liberty.
But we don't know how many kids are going to be there. What do we do? Approximately?
We know approximately. We'll know for sure when we go through registration. We know how many live in the catchment area, so we know how many are freshmen and sophomores who have to go there. Uh, and, uh, we know how many juniors and seniors have expressed the desire to go there. We'll know for sure when they go through registration.
And so, will we know this by next week?
We won't know registration numbers for juniors and seniors until they go through that process in January.
But there's no reason to think that we're even going to come close to 1,000.
No, no.
So, is there a possibility that these 45 kids can go?
Maybe, yeah.
Certainly, if they were twos graders, there'd be no reason not to.
Right, I'm just saying-
There's no, yeah, there's absolutely- There's absolutely no reason that, likely, there's no reason that the two seniors, the four juniors, and even the 16 sophomores would not be able to go.
So, it's maybe the 23 kids that we're talking about?
Yeah.
All right. Does everybody, does anybody have other questions about this? Because we obviously can't vote on it. We'll get more information for soon.
As, as we update it, we'll keep pushing it out to you.
Yeah, those enrollment projections, again, I mean, since it's the people rating, it'll be for-
Yep. Yeah, you should have those, uh, days today, Tuesday. You should have them tomorrow, Thursday the latest, probably tomorrow.
And tell me how that report is written. Like, is it broken down by elementary school?
Yes, and it's the new catchment areas.
Okay.
So, they looked at, um, what, uh, you know, what man will look like, uh, with the Peninsula neighborhood and not the North Lincoln neighborhood. So, that's the, the aged-up piece. So, we'll be able to kind of look forward to what those attendance areas are going to look like, so we'll be able to see how many students are in there in the future.
Okay, any additional questions? I'm not trying to touch folks. I'm not sure if there's anything you want to add particularly.
So, um, I'm sorry, well, how should I, I'm not an administrator clearly.
Well, I would say anyone, but I would just give them a poll as well.
So, you said you did send a letter to the, this year's seventh graders to find out what they're going to, and will you have that information by next week?
We can have some information based on the ones that responded.
Yeah.
You know, our next step will be to test the administrators with going and getting answers from everybody, so we definitely won't have that. That, we won't want by registration, so we make sure we're registering them at the appropriate school, but, I mean, we- Uh, we're going to try to start high school registration as soon as we get back from break. We'd like to get movement on that as soon as possible. Junior high could be a little bit delayed from that, but, um, you know, we have the, we can try to tabulate the information we have based on the people that have submitted letters back.
Can I just ask a follow-up? So, am I understanding it right, as far as the people in the capstone position, like this year's seventh graders, they were told they don't need to fill out the voluntary transfer form-
Correct.
But they need to notify you- But they need to notify you somehow, right?
They all got a letter.
So they all got a letter, and then they were asked to send that back.
We, but we haven't.
But we're saying if we didn't get that from everybody, then.
Yeah, we didn't get a hundred percent response.
Do you have a deadline on it? Was it December first also?
Um, no, I don't believe they put it down. The letter's attached to the, uh, agenda item. I don't think there was a, a date on there, you know? I think people knew December first, so we got a lot, you know, that was when we got our flurry of them back, was before December first, but, um, we'll obviously take those requests as we go throughout, and that's why we'll follow up and just deal with them as we have them, so we can accurately portray staffing.
And even seeing the partial total.
And then we do have a handful of people that I know just from personal contact that filled out both. So, filled out both. They filled out a voluntary transfer request and a capstone request.
Well, in theory, if you get the transfer, you don't have to take it, right?
No.
Some people are covering their tracks by saying, I won't put in the transfer, but.
Could be.
I'll make up my mind.
I know that a couple of the people that contacted me were eligible for capstone, and they just wanted to make really sure that.
But those numbers aren't reflected in here.
If you applied for a voluntary transfer, but you are eligible for a capstone, you're in here, because we, this is all the voluntary transfers.
So these numbers could be smaller than.
They could be, yeah. There could be kids that are on both lists.
So what you could provide to us is kind of a range. So you could say this year, like I asked, so Wickham is the only, only elementary school that's leaving the Liberty zone. Kirkwood is the only elementary school that's joining the zone. So we could say, okay, right now there are sixty-three Wickham seventh graders. Right now there are fifty Kirkwood seventh graders at Northwest. At least then we would know this is, like, I think you told us actually, I think you said fifty-seven. I wrote it down so much.
So that's the.
Oh, it's forty-seven. But that was sixth graders.
That's sixth graders at Kirkwood, yeah.
Those sixth graders. But you can tell us how many were from Kirkwood, because you would have that from last year's class sizes even, um, at sixth, now, I understand some went, so.
Yeah.
You know, there's some of this.
Yeah.
But, um, but same with, for the people that are switching out of the east side. So Lincoln, North Lincoln, Little Tucker, who's a student in attendance on, um, and Alexander, you know how many there are? Again, against.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think how, what a spreadsheet looks like for how we captured those capstone letters. I'm not sure we've captured them by each neighborhood. You know, I mean, so we have the students listed for junior high, and if.
Yeah, that's our problem is that, at the high school, we don't, we haven't, we didn't link, uh, we didn't link their, their, their progression. So, and that, that's part of the challenge, is we then have to go back into the student information system and try to recreate that, because it's not in there.
Well, at, at worst, you could look at last year's annual report, and it says.
Yeah.
Alexander had thirty-sixth graders. Now we know there's probably some that left, there's some that came.
Sure.
There might be fifty now. But that would be like, you know, just ballpark. It's something.
You mean to compare to what we have back for that data as a comparison point?
Um.
Like, so if we got thirty capstone letters back, and there was forty kids from.
Yeah, yeah, so we have a kind of an idea of, okay, let's just say not everybody did the form, but let's just say everybody from Alexander is gonna exercise their option to go to Southeast. How many kids is that gonna be? What would the range be? Because I, I feel like, especially in the case of Southeast, we need to know what kind of like the.
So maybe, could we do it like this? Could we give you, um, so let's say we, we took Southeast, and we took all the feeder schools into Southeast, and we gave you their sixth grade populations for last year? Then we did seventh graders at Southeast this year, and the number of students who have either turned in a capstone form, or we could give you the number of seventh graders at Southeast and the number of seventh graders who turned in a capstone form? I'm not sure we're gonna drill far enough down into the data for you that way.
I bet we're gonna have it by area, because we'd have had to know who to mail it to.
Oh, pull it by off.
Right. We'd have to know it was only Alexander, because they would be all the ones that moved.
So out of those capstone letters we got back.
Okay.
You know, we had to send those.
Sure.
Those elementary attendance areas essentially different letters.
Sure.
So I think we should have that by, by each area. So I think we could pull it.
So you could say we sent fifty.
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe that's what we do, is we send X number of capstone letters to this attendance area, receive this many back, and then last year, there were this many sixth graders in that, uh, area.
The capstone letters, actually, that would be the accurate number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then we could give you the sixth grade number of students who lived in that capstone area last year.
Right, right.
So. That's a long way to get to your question, but I think as I thought through that, we should have that based on there, because that's how we also go back and target which kids we need to talk to, right? Is because we didn't get a letter back from them, so.